Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the meeting for the Amerimac School Board, SAU 26, for Monday, September 11th, 2023. I'd like to ask everybody in the room to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to start our meeting tonight, as we often do, with public participation. And we'd like to remind members of the audience, if you choose to speak tonight, to please state your name and your address for the record. If you are a student, there is no need to give your address, just your name. So we open the mic to public comment.
Truck Mower, Ford Depot Street. Good evening, everybody. I thought I'd beat the crowd by coming early, but I must have been, in some manner, successful. I would very much like to address you both as the Vice President of the Historical Society and as a Budget Committee member. I'm sure all of you are aware that I stepped down this year as Chairman to make way for younger blood to facilitate our committee meetings. And I'm very much looking forward to just being a regular member of the Budget Committee, where I can focus on my particular contribution to the committee discussions, as opposed to facilitating everybody else's. So along those lines, I want to yet encourage more progress. Yes, you've made progress. I'm so happy about that. But I want more. I'm sorry, I want more. I want competency assessment as quickly as we can possibly implement it. As most of you know, it's not a new idea. It's at least 20 years old, in terms of policy, on the Department of Education in New Hampshire. And the school district, like many school districts, suffer a little sidetracking now and then. But it's time for us to really focus on the one thing that we all really understand. We'll not only improve the quality of education for each and every student, but will have good effects too numerous to particularize in terms of how we administer things. We have the potential to eliminate our dropout rate. We have the potential to re-inspire students who otherwise were dragged into a vortex of a grading system that didn't fulfill their needs in education. Competency assessment, I'm sure we all may have a slightly different idea of how it works, and yet we know the fundamental steam engine that it is in creating the outcomes that we want in the town of Marimac. Now, you can't really talk about competency assessment without talking at the same time about extended learning opportunities. I've met your new Director of Pathways to Graduation. Seems to be a very fine fellow. He has an eclectic background, which I think is suited to the unusual opportunities that ELOs present students, and for that matter, the school district, in teaching. It's inspiring to do something a little outside the ordinary. Now, in the past, when we've talked about ELOs, which is, you know, the acronym everybody uses today, they were generally referred to as business partnerships, where we were always trying to get some big business, whether it was Pratt &amp; Whitney, or UPS, or foundations like the United Fund, and so on and so forth. Well, all of those, yes, are important, but nowhere near as effective as utilizing the opportunities that you have here in your own community. And you can think of all of the efficient advantages that working with a local organization would bring to you. And of course, there are many in the town of Marimac. They all have different missions, but the Historical Society is, in fact, an organization dedicated to preserving the history of the town of Marimac. And we have a number of experienced and retired individuals who were tops in their fields. And the wide variety of opportunities that exist in working closely with the Historical Society to develop and participate in ELOs is extensive. I would point to myself alone in that I'm the town historian. I am a native of the town of Marimac. I understand its history in many forms. I happen also to have been a certified teacher. I'm perfectly capable and consider myself an experienced individual in creating lesson plans and so forth that would interface well with extended learning opportunities. I also happen to be an authority on the navigation of the Marimac River. It runs through eight miles of our town. Those are just a couple of examples. I don't want to flatter myself with an extended list of the things that I think I have to offer, but I am not alone in the society. Our President, John Listoka, is a nationally recognized expert on fiber optics. So we bring both new technologies that young students are entering into the field of, that they can better understand how and why these things work. I know I have benefited tremendously from understanding better how light bends as a function of physics. So many opportunities. We have probably in the neighborhood of 150 retired individuals who are looking to contribute to the community that they reside in. And we are a ready, able, and rich organization to participate with the school district. I'd also like to say that, from my personal experience, I hope that ELOs will be generated at the student-teacher level in all academics across the board, and then filtered through to something that serves the purpose of the school district and is approved for confirmation by the parties involved. They should be open to all students. We have the ability here in Marimac to make this happen for all students. I appreciate the time you've given me. I won't monopolize it. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other public to comment, we will move on to recognitions.
We have no recognitions this evening.
And we will move on to informational updates.
First, I want to thank our staff and our students for their resilience and persevering last week during an extraordinarily warm week. We were all in and out of the buildings, and they were very, very warm, but nothing but professionalism prevailed. And so, thank you to the teachers, all the support staff, the students, and thank you to the parents for understanding the half-day, the early release day, on Friday. On a couple of successive days, as I was into several other schools, the amount of residual heat kept increasing. And then you add on to that 90 to 95-degree temperatures during the daytime, and it became very, very difficult. But I didn't hear complaints. I saw teachers and paraprofessionals who were carrying out their jobs to the best of their abilities and in an outstanding manner in working with students. And so, thank you to them for doing that. Thank you to the parents for being understanding. Coming up this week, we have some legal training on Friday. It's a continuation of our summer August retreat. We have our legal counsel that will be talking about and discussing a variety of issues with us. It takes place this Friday. On Wednesday of this week, and I know Amy may want to say some more about it, we do have another meeting. We have one almost every other week on competencies and competency-based education and grading. We have chosen to utilize the New Hampshire Learning Institute and several individuals from that organization to help lead us to a point where we are working with competencies that have great integrity and value. What we don't have patience for is anything that's window dressing in nature. If we're going to do it, we're going to do it correctly. And it might take a little bit longer, but it's going to be done, and it's going to be done, it's going to be done well, similar to what Holly is doing with the ELOs. Additionally, I want to recognize the fact that today, the New Hampshire Interscholastic Catholic Association honored three Westford staff members: Kip Jackson, who was the high school football coach, Tammy LaBrow, who was the business teacher and volleyball coach, and Rick Erder for his work in health and PE.
Did you say Westford?
Did I say Westford?
You said Westford, yeah.
You know, I've been gone there for almost three years now.
I think that's the first time I've heard you say it.
And I apologize, because these are three great people from Marimac, and all who have worked for 25 years or more with our students. A wonderful letter from a person who I think runs a local restaurant. I'll mention the name. Some of you may know it's Melissa Castengue. Does that name sound familiar? Says, "I'm writing to address the behavior that your players demonstrated at my restaurant last night. I had the pleasure of serving your team dinner." That's the boys' soccer team. "And they were perfect gentlemen. As a mother of three teenagers myself, I understand what it feels like to be assumed guilty everywhere you go. People have a false and negative perception that teenagers are always trying to ruin occasions, when that simply is not the case. Your players were respectful to myself and my coworkers, as well as other diners. They were patient, as we were busier than usual on the night that they came. Every single one of them used to please and thank you, and they were organized when it was time for the check. My congratulations to you for coaching this remarkable group of young men, and I wish you all the good luck in this season." So congratulations to our boys' soccer team and the coaches. That is an outstanding letter. And thank you, Melissa, for writing that letter. Lots of activities going on right now, beginning of the school year, second full week. We're going to have a great year this year. We've got a very strong leadership team. We know what we need to do. We know how we're going to do it. And once again, thank you for your support in allowing it to happen. One final thing, I wear my American flag tie three times a year: Memorial Day, Veterans' Day, and 9/11. And this is the day we remember all of those people who we lost. Many of us had friends on that particular tragic day, and we salute them and their families. And that is it.
Questions or comments? All right, then we move on. Thank you, Bill, to Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
Good evening, everyone. I too wanted to start off by thanking all of the students, the teachers, the families. As we've navigated the opening of school, it's just been a great beginning. I know it was very warm, and now it's going to turn back to rain, so welcome back. Bring your umbrella. I do have an update later in the meeting, so I thought I would save the majority of the curriculum instruction and assessment things for them, but I just wanted to follow up with what Bill was talking about. We do have a very robust schedule with the New Hampshire Learning Initiative, really worked out for the entire school year. Brian Stack is going to be meeting with the high school building leadership team, as well as the district leadership team, once a month. And then Kathy White, who some of you may know, she is their assessment specialist, and she's going to be meeting with groups of teachers that have been, it's the humanities group, I'm looking at Harley, it's the humanities group, and the STEM group with art, music, business, on a rotating basis. So once a month, they're going to be working with her to really flesh out the competencies. And you may know that they did have some competencies before COVID, and so we're really starting with, you know, are those still what we want? And then pairing that with what kind of evidence, what kind of assessments do we need to determine whether students are competent or not? So I do feel very hopeful that, you know, this time in May or June, I'll be giving you a much more significant update about how that's going.
And that's a tremendous amount of work. Questions or comments? Great, thanks. Thank you very much. Moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Business Update.
Yes, thank you. I only have something short and sweet. We just finished our annual audit a couple of weeks ago, which is always a pleasure to be accosted by around seven CPAs at the same time. No, they're really good. We have a good crew. We deal with Plaza and Sanderson. They've been around for probably 40 years. And I think we get a break because the town uses them too, so we have an ability to bundle up on some services, like Gasmie 75, which I'm all sure you people are absolutely, totally familiar with what I just said, but it is a big deal. And so, we're bringing in $6.7 million surplus at the end of the year. Last year was 8.1. We can't expect that, because that was the COVID effect. So we're slowly getting back to reality as far as budgeting goes. And when I was talking with Ryan, the head auditor there, he says, "We're seeing that in all the districts." You know, their surpluses are still high because of teachers that, you know, they're planning for vacancies to be filled, and they just don't get filled. And so, now we're kind of getting back into normal. So hopefully, what I want to do when we start to run the numbers on a new budget, I'm going to look at the new staff, figure out, I'm going to work with Melissa Faslick to figure out, do we have all the vacancies in there? Do we have the proper price for them? So we'll be able to give you a more accurate representation of what the staff is composed of and what we think it's going to be looking like next year, now that we actually have the teacher's contract that's attracting more people to us that was passed. So 6.7, we do have the ability to retain some. That's funny. Department of Revenue Administration, the DOE put out a sheet that would automatically figure out what the maximum amount is. And I know what the maximum amount is, 5% of our net assessed assessment. So it'd be around $3 million. We wouldn't want to do that, but it would be around $3 million. And so, I looked down the dropdown menu. I can't find Marimac. It's like, where the heck is Marimac? And so, they forgot to put us on the list. So I'm getting that fixed right now, and I'll give you a better rendition once I get the final rendering from them. But we did pretty good. We paid all our bills, and we came out with a nice little surplus to either hang on to a couple hundred thousand dollars of it, perhaps, for some sort of contingency, or to just return to the taxpayers, but that will be your decision. We'll discuss it at a later point. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Questions or discussion? All right, moving on to School Board update, and just reiterating what Bill said earlier. Again, we appreciate and sympathize with the folks that dealt with the heat last week. It's been a great start to the school year, all things considered with the heat. My fourth grader came home on the second day of school and said, "I love my teacher, and I love my schedule." So as far as I'm concerned, everything's going really well in the Martin household. So I hope everyone's start to the year has gotten off smoothly. Just a quick update for my fellow board members. Next time we get together, I'm going to be bringing some proposed resolutions for the upcoming Delegate Assembly that we all have to vote on. So I'm going to be sending you guys that information ahead of time, so you can take a look at the material, which is coming up on October 14th. So I just wanted to let everybody know that's coming up. And that is all I have for School Board update. And our student representative has been excused for tonight, so we do not have a student representative update. Moving on to Old Business, Review of Revised 2023 Goal Setting Document.
In your packet tonight is a revised document from the last meeting. I think each of you brought up a couple of things that we brought back to Tony, who was our facilitator from Primax. And so, you'll notice in the upper right-hand corner, we've tried to keep track of the revisions. At one point between Sandy and myself, we were looking at three, four, five different versions. So you'll notice that goal number one has been returned to this year's goals. That starts on page 12. We did work through some of the updated timelines, as well as some updated objectives based on the work that was done during the 2022-2023 school year. And then, you'll notice that your new goal is properly placed as goal number five, which is focusing on consistent communication with the community. So if you take a look at this this evening, I did let Tony know that we'd be reviewing it again tonight, and if there are additional changes that you would like before we post this, of course, we want it to be an accurate document. And then, what we've done on our end is that we've created like a tracker sheet that compiles last year's progress with this year's goals, so we'll be able to continue to let you know how we're doing in meeting those goals. So between Melissa, myself, Bill, Matt, we have a document where we're making updates, and we'll then circle back with all of you.
Great. Questions or comments? As I was going through this this weekend, I was, after the last one, was kind of taking a closer look to make sure that anything, nothing was missed, and nothing stood out to me. Appreciate Lori's eye on that. Anything else from any of the board? Feel good about it? All right, well, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to New Business and the discussion surrounding Extended Learning Opportunities at Marimac High School. Speaking of goals, and bringing up our guest tonight, Mr. Harley Hall.
Okay, good evening to the School Board. Thank you very much for having me this evening. I wanted to bring everybody up to speed on the status of ELOs, excuse me, at Marimac High School. I'll leave my contact information up there for viewers who would like to email or send communications to the school, and there'll be a website at the end as well. So a quick update on summer work. The summer focus was building an infrastructure that could absorb the inevitable push that happens as soon as students come into a new program, and they get shiny car, and they want to try it, and that's great. I wanted to remain flexible and to be able to grow with student interest. So that meant building policies and procedures with school counselors, Canvas page for student work, social media pages to get the word out for the Adult Diploma Program and ELOs. Honestly, some of my concerns were, will students be interested? Will they know, will they want to know, want to do ELOs? Will they know how to find information on them? And so, kind of my leading goal was, if you build it, they will come. I think we're all old enough to get the Field of Dreams reference here. So we have done really well at the outset. I will show you some numbers here in a minute for what is currently going, and what is in the planning stages for Semester One, and as well as what's coming up in Semester Two. Just kind of a little overview, the Graduation Pathways Program is a little bifurcated, so the ELOs are on one side, the Adult Diploma Program's on the other. The mission of both of these collectively is to provide all students with multiple pathways to graduation. And I think public commentary said available to all students, and I think that's important to understand, that ELOs are 100% available to all students. Simple definition for somebody who might be uninitiated and watching and seeing this, what is an ELO? If you read the academic literature that's out there, it varies quite a bit, so I wanted to define it here. It's a credit-bearing learning experience that takes place outside of the traditional classroom, and oftentimes, outside of the school day. Not always. Sometimes there's some time in the school day, but most of the time it's outside of. And they are very, very much student-driven. Students can seek out an ELO and tailor it. Some ELOs can be, are built off of competencies already, so it's in a natural state, and then students can select two to three, or up to seven, competencies, depending on what credit they're looking for, and gear their ELO that way. It also allows community entities to create opportunities that we can't put within the walls of Marimac due to space or practical considerations, and I'll touch on some of the examples here in just a minute. And ELOs use mentors. These could be certified teachers in the classroom. These could be community members, as we heard during public comment, to facilitate learning. Very, very much student-driven, so as students come in and as we get word out about the programs and all the different things that can happen in this program, it opens up the doors for all of us. And it can be used to fill any elective credit at the school, absolutely anything. Anything that is elective, we can do. We have the flexibility for it, and I will cover a couple of those here. They look a little different, depending on what a student wants. Probably the one that we will see the most of initially is independent coursework. A student who is taking a goodly amount of challenging classes, AP classes, dual enrollment classes, will find that they have a one-off, and they can't fit AP Spanish into their schedule, because they're taking AP Chem. And we try to do as much of that as we can, but you can't meet every circumstance. So students who want to do an ELO can do that and work with a teacher who is certified to do that, and they get, meet together and work through that process. Career exploration, works with a teacher or community member, can look through careers or career cluster. If they're related, you could look through two or three and obtain elective credit that way. Advanced studies, we have a couple of these going well, specifically for AP Physics II. We have two students taking AP Physics II as an ELO. Two students is not enough to run a section and a course in the normal calendar and the normal master schedule, but it is a good number for an ELO, and that's one of the other opportunities that's available. An internship, which is probably the one that most people understand, is seeing is from more than 20 or 25 years older. There's a temporary unpaid position that will go into the community in a field and pair with a professional and work there. And the last one is project-based learning. These use teacher or community mentors, and they can take scientific, which is probably the one we think of at first, but it could also be civic, or social, or economic questions. So the window is wide open for all of these. ELOs are for all students. I heard that in public commentary. For the record, you guys had this since the seventh, so I did not cherry pick this one. This was something I was going to talk about from the get-go. All ELOs involve the four items that you see there: reflection, research, presentation, and product. No matter the ELO, all of these elements are visible. Some call for more research. Some are a little bit more built up with the AP classes. They're kind of already there, but they are there for all students. I recommend this for our struggling students. I recommend this for our highest achieving students. This is one of those programs that is for every single student, and every learner at every skill level and every comfort level should do it. There are some grade-level restrictions. I'm leery, and so is Mr. Claire, and so is Ms. Colbert, the Director of Councily of Altering or Reducing a Ninth Grader or Tenth Grader Schedule to Accommodate an ELO, to lower their class load to accommodate an ELO. Whereas, a junior or senior that is making satisfactory, or in often cases, well above satisfactory, graduation progress, we will do, but we do have sophomores in ELOs as we speak, so it's not impossible or even restricted. There is no limit on how many you can take. It's usually kind of a one at a time for the first ELO, but that's just a guideline. We don't want to be restrictive. I have one student that did an ELO over the summer, just finished his today, but is in another one. And then I have another student who is in two ELOs as well. So it's more of a guideline. It's not a hard and fast rule. Students also get to choose their grading. They can choose pass/fail. They can choose a comprehensive level course or honors credit. Usually, the honors is reserved for those students taking AP Physics II or AP Spanish. If they took it in a classroom in a traditional setting, they would get the honors weight for that work, and so they have to demonstrate a couple more competencies than a comprehensive level course. So as of, this has changed. There are still 13 active ELOs. One has resolved. One finished today. The presentation was today in seventh period. There are six current ELOs in planning stages for Semester One. That means a student has come to me and said, "I have an interest to do an ELO," and so now I'm fielding teachers' interests or community mentors' interests, so those are in the building stage, so not yet active. And there are two ELOs that are completely ready. One is sequential. It's the one that's being completed now. One student is doing an ELO and is building it further, and wants to do a second ELO in the spring. Plans for Growth. Parent Outreach. Mr. Claire sent information home that had links to our Plans for growth, parent outreach, Mr. Claire sent information home that had links to our social media, our school website and all of these things. I will show these to you as well at the end. The ELO program has a dedicated page for Instagram, Facebook and Twitter. It's a little Spartan at this point. As soon as I have student presentations to put up and involvement, these things will be going on the social media pages. Business outreach with the Chamber of Commerce for both the local one and the regional one and rotary involvement to spread, spread our wings a little bit in the community. New the ELO network is a network of all the ELO directors in the state. So I will continue meeting with them. We have our first meeting coming up the first week of October. And we already have a couple of programs going. It's on the website, which you can see, but we have Merrimack Historical Society has stepped up and offered our students a pathway to do some historical study. And so that is there for students that are looking for something of interest. We are also in the early planning stages for a January teen academy for the Merrimack Police Department. In the past, they've run a community academy, a citizens academy. We're going to work on this and I've been working with the Deputy Chief, Matt Tarleton and Phil Vander Side to work on that. And we're going to try to recruit some students to make that happen. So there are some things that are available that we can't do in school, but we can do this way. And the good thing is this upcoming summer, we will have the opportunity for many more ELOs since my position is year round. I work in the summer. This was the first summer in 10 years. I had to get used to working over the summer. So it took me a couple of days. So we will have more over the summer and I wanted to leave that up there. That is the pathways website. And the QR code will get you there as well, as well as links and the connections to our social media pages.
Great. I'll open it up to questions, comments. Go ahead, Jenna.
I have so much to say.
Okay.
It's all good. I just want the community to know if you're watching. Mr. Hall is truly fantastic and has done an incredible job with this. I had a student that was involved in an ELO last year before Mr. Hall came on and it was a little bit. Let's say messy. And then Mr. Hall came on and what I loved about Mr. Hall is he sat down and he said, listen, this has to reach a certain level of standard. And in order for the this number, this amount of credit to be given, this standard had to be met. And he worked with my student to make that happen. And that was a really cool and unique experience to me for me to have as a board member because, you know, it was great to see him say, yeah, we're not just handing out credits like candy, you know? We are saying, here's the standard and here's what you have to do. Here's what you have to demonstrate and you have to, you know, reflect and research and present and, you know, this product. And it was a really cool. So I commend you. You've done a lot of work since then. And so any student coming in now has a very clear path and a very competent mentor. So very, very excited about all that you've done since we started. And I think I, when we got back to if they build it, they will, if you build it, they will come. I think it's if you build it, they will tell their friends and then they will come, you know, especially right? Because kids think these things are cool, like outside of the box thinkers. I love that you you emphasize that it's not just for students who need a pathway to graduation that might be alternative. It can be for the high achieving students that want to just do something a little different or outside of box, something that Merrimack High School doesn't offer, which I love. I love, love that you're connecting with the New Hampshire ELO network. As I was learning about ELOs and talking to our guidance department previously, you know, we hadn't been involved in that. And that was a huge miss for us. So the fact that you are jumping in to get involved with that, I'm so thrilled about that. One question, and I think I know the answer to it, but I'm going to, I'm going to ask it so that you can clarify for the community. Can students use ELOs to satisfy graduation requirements? I know you said any elective, but like tech, those kinds of things. We talk about that. I know you and I have talked about that.
Yes, no. And at this point, there are schools that build that in. The schools that have had yellow programs running for eight to 10 years. And so I think Mr. Olson said, you know, we want to build it right. And so right now for the first year or two, the focus is on building a structure, getting our, our staff and faculty who are going to be doing a lot of these ELOs comfortable with the idea, understanding what the expectations are of them. And some of them are a little nervous. Is this going to be teaching like a sixth class period? And and trying to, and trying to make sure all teachers are on board exactly what the structure is looking. The long range is to include a lot of those courses. But for the first year or two, the focus is on electives. And when I ran the self, it made me a little nervous, but I ran the self inspection checklist that the ELO network that the DOE puts out and they encourage that, but they, one of the things that they recommended for very new programs, and this is month one of us on the ground, is that elective only was a viable pathway to starting a, a program, a sustainable program before adding graduation requirements as well.
Yeah. And I appreciate you explaining that because you know, there's those, those high achieving kids who have their, their schedule loaded with so many different things. You know, whether it be CTE or band and chorus together, which makes putting in, getting some of those requirements to fit in while also taking these other electives at the same time. So I just wanted to clarify that because I know I already reached out to you to clarify that. So I think that's a good point of clarification for now.
Perfect. No, I'm happy to clarify.
Thank you so much for everything you're doing.
Go ahead, Lori.
Just a recommendation. I was looking at your website. Love going to QR code. Get right there. You explained the different kinds like you had in here and the explanation of the kind is there, but like if I, if my kid came to me and said, I want to do an ELO and this is what I, and I'd be like, well, can you do that? Does that even work? And I'd go to the website looking for like specific examples. So maybe putting in things that of ELOs that have been done maybe at other schools with more advanced programs. So that I as a parent would be able to go, oh, okay. So you're going on this month long humanitarian trip in a foreign country. We can approach the ELO office for this as an ELO. It will fit in one of these categories. So I love the explanations, but maybe some specific examples would, would be beneficial.
Okay, I will do that. And to you brought up summer travel and I fielded some of those questions in August. One of the keys to ELOs is they have to be arranged ahead of time. Those standards have to be there. So if somebody is doing a month long humanitarianship or if they're going to spend three weeks in Italy and they're not just going to the Leaning Tower of Pisa and going to the Trevi Fountain and then leaving, if they are doing some type of cultural immersion, those are ripe for ELOs and I want to encourage that. So I will put some specific examples. Disney trips don't count, but I'm sorry, I know there's some Disney files, but those, those are, those are absolutely fields and I'll, I'll add a couple of specific examples. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Lori.
So I just have a couple of things. Obviously, we know the purpose is to provide an educational experience that's meaningful and relevant. But ELOs, when they are set up by the Department of Education, they were set up based on local school board policy. So actually, the school board should also be working with you to create a vision and what the vision is, which we have done, you know? But as far as like, you know, elective credit versus course credit, if it is aligned with a, with competencies. And I understand that this is our first year out, but you know, that could be if we had a student that really needed that credit, that could be something that we could do. And I think it's really important that we're encouraging all students and sometimes in, in learning, learning isn't just on a timeline. So we have to look at, you know, what the experience is and if we can take that experience and, and tie it into an extended learning opportunity. I think that's important. And then the one thing that we really haven't talked about is work skills, because with work skills, that's the one place that is hourly. It's based only on hours. It's not work. So all of your ELOs are based on competencies. But when you do work skills, it's hourly based and students, we just need to be able to produce the hours they work through either, you know, their work stubs or, and then they would get the credit. They can get up to two credits for work skills per year based on that information. So I, I don't know if that falls under guidance or if that's falling under you. But you know, when we look at, and we were talking about this at the last school board meeting, people were concerned about a dropout rate. But I'm sure some of those students actually had a job and actually could have gotten two credits and maybe would have graduated if we had that opportunity for them.
Can I, can I address the, the work credits?
Please.
The, the work credits are absolutely ingrained in the adult diploma program and that is by RSA from the state. The New Hampshire ELO network, our last meeting last year, and then there was some email communications about potentially using paid work for ELOs, but that is not something that is done in the ELO network. It's, it's, it's being fielded. It's being tested. And at that meeting, I said, we would be interested in fielding that because I agree that that's something that we can do. For our ELO policy for the school board, we do have a school board policy as required. It hasn't been reviewed in a couple of years, which I was going off of what I had available to me. I'm going off of memory. I might be 2007. I'm going off of memory, but that's ballpark.
I feel like that's where most of them we've been updating have been.
No, I understand. And so if we're, and you know, Lori said that's a policy that might want to, if I'd be happy to work with the board and work through it and make best practices. But that was what I was working with when, when I took over and I tried to use that as my guideline. But I, we are working, the whole ELO network is looking at work, but it is already built into the adult diploma program. I just, I just did one today for the adult diploma program.
There's RSAs to guide you, but really, you know, the Department of Education really wants, you know, from everything that I've learned in, in my time is they want our community, our school district to adopt what we want, our ELOs, you know, so, you know, when a squam might do it this way, Salem might do it that way. But we have the ability to create what we want. And so I've said this a million times. I just want, I want this process to be so streamlined. So there, there isn't, you know, any fences like the, you know, here's, here's the learning. Let's celebrate the learning. Let's make sure that the student had a great opportunity to do something different and then we award credit.
I just, I had two questions and then I clicked on the QR code and, and found the answer to one of them, which was, how do I go about requesting an ELO?
Yes, I tried to make that on the front, front page.
Yes. And it was very clear and it's a, it's a simple Google form that anybody can fill out. So it's nice and easy for anybody. I figured it out. So, and I may have missed this or misunderstood it when you were talking about ELOs are for all students. Are there academic prerequisites for applying for an ELO? Like if I'm having a tough time my junior year with my grades, can I still go about getting an ELO approved?
Yes. It's the, one of the very first things I do is I pull a transcript and just to make sure that students are on pathway. And then one of the things that I've been doing that I did today was a student who wanted to do an ELO, but was a full English credit behind and two English credits needed this senior year. So I was a little leery of adding an ELO credit until they had a plan of action. And so that's one of the things that I sat down with the counselors and I sat down with the student. I was like, let's get a plan of action and then we'll do an ELO. But I don't want an ELO to detract from the absolute required graduation credits that the school board and the state have, especially for that credit, that one especially. That's the big one. Everybody's got to have one every, every year. But yes, I, I, it's very open. I have only said cautionary tales when students are behind credits for graduation.
As someone who was not a particularly good student, but would have loved ELOs, that's, that was my number one. I'd like, would I have been able to get an ELO? So, and I'm sure I'm not the only one in that category. So thank you. This is great. This is right in, in line with the goals we set for the district. The fact, the, the numbers that you put up showing the interest is already there. I think this will grow quickly. The word is already out there and it's a positive. The conversations are very, very positive. So I only see progress being made. I'm really excited to see where even like where we are six months from now, a year from now, a couple of years from now. I think it's going to grow. The town is growing, more opportunities are growing. You know, what defines as work is growing. So yeah, I think this is a huge step in the right direction for sure. So thank you for all your work when it comes to all of this. And I just look forward to seeing where we're at in a couple of months. Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
For coming.
Ken, could I just make a final comment? First of all, Holly, thank you for the extraordinary job that you have done. But this is, this is a real feel good story. There is a tangible improvement. This school district, you know, from a number of years, we had a one size fits all model at the high school and we know that doesn't work. We're all different. We all have like different likes and dislikes. And with your support, the budget committee's support, the community's support and a deliberative session, we have a first class opportunity now for our students who want to take a different pathway. And for all students with, with the ELOs, and this is something that's going to endure for a number of years. And I think there's reason for all of us to feel proud about our collective involvement in this because this is a significant change to the opportunities and the lives of students, particularly at the high school. And Holly, you've done just an extraordinary job with this, far, taking it far beyond what I had anticipated would be in place for this school year. So thank you to you. Thank you to all of you and the budget committee in the town for, for this.
Can I have one more?
Yeah, go ahead, Lori.
So it's, it's interesting because you made a very solid point about budgets because, you know, as this program grows, the way that, you know, we still have to talk about like the 2007, you know, ELO policy. But, you know, the vision really would be that if we had a mentor or we had a teacher that they would get a stipend to support that student learning. So, you know, they would get the approval and then the teacher or whoever the mentor would, would be doing the work and it's a small stipend. It's like $300. It's not, you know, it's, it's not a ton of money, but if you had 30 ELOs times 300, you know, we, we are going to need a line item in the budget for this program.
I can speak to that. I just haven't dropped that bomb on Matt yet. But yes, as we go into the budget process, he knows, he knows it's coming. Yeah. So we are working off of some general fund monies. It's $150 stipend per semester, which averages out to the 300 for those AP Physics courses. And it's that and that is the, that is the standard rate amongst the, the, some schools don't pay and I wasn't ascribing to that. And I knew this, we have to have all stakeholders here, not just students and we wanted parents and we need the teachers to do this. If somebody wants me to teach a pottery class, it's going to flop over pretty quick. And so we need those teachers. And so that's where we are and we are, we're doing that this year. But yes, we would need to line item that for, for future ones.
Can I just say one more thing when it comes to the 2007 policy? We do have a wonderful document here that is, you know, policies in progress with attorney for review next in line. Maybe we could move ELOs up from deep into future consideration and up into next in line. Is that possible? I think that might help Harley.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Okay. And we will now move on to curriculum instruction and assessment update from Ms. Amy Doyle.
The slides in your packet have been updated just a little bit. When they got to you, they were more in a draft form. So you may see some additional information on some of the slides. So thank you for letting me come tonight and give you some updates that you may be interested in. My guess is that you might be hearing from parents or teachers or just community members because we have made some pretty significant changes in, in this area. So I wanted to make sure that you were all aware as well as the community members. And if anyone has any questions or they want to have any follow up conversations, I would certainly welcome them either with their building administration or myself. So in the area of literacy, I would say this is the, probably the subject area or the content area that we have done the most work as we head into the 2324 school year. So in the spring of last year, you may remember that we did an implementation of foundations and geodes, which is a structured literacy approach. So foundations is a very systematic way of teaching phonics. And at that time, we were, I was working with the literacy coordinators, which are a very gifted group of people, one at each of the lower elementary schools, plus one at the upper elementary, one at the, at the middle school. And we were really talking and unpacking our, not just our New Hampshire SAS scores, but our STAR scores, because we were using STAR at the time. But also our classroom assessment information. And it was just really clear that our, what we were using in the area of phonics and to teach the basic core literacy components was just not doing what we knew students needed. So we made a decision with your support to make that change in March, which is, you know, pretty much, I think at the time we had talked about, it's pretty much unheard of for a district to pivot like that. But it was the right thing to do. We were able to do some really high quality professional development with Wilson, who owns foundations. And that'll continue this year. I'll talk a little bit about that later on. But then this year is really full implementation from the beginning of the year. And we were able to see even in the last trimester of the school year, that there were significant gains in basic reading skills at our, at a lower, at the lower elementary. So we're really happy about that. Foundations is a K to three program, but we've made the decision to continue. Foundations is a K to three program, but we've made the decision to continue to use a scope and sequence that's out of the University of Florida called U, we call it UFLY, but it's the University of Florida Literacy Institute. And that, that scope and sequence is really looking at, you had students just like our kids that didn't have a structured literacy program. Where are they? What are the specific skills that they need? And how can we provide that instruction and move on? So we don't want to miss those kids. So typically, basic foundational skills are taught kindergarten through second and third grade. And so we're looping in our fourth grade students as well with that scope and sequence. So I did want to point out though, that we are using the foundations handwriting component in grade three, based on the new RSA, foundations teaches course of handwriting. So we want to make sure that students have that systematic instruction and handwriting. You may be familiar with Hagrid. Hagrid is a program that teaches phonemic awareness. It's a very quick hit of instruction, about 10 minutes a day and very, very effective in teaching students another part of a core literacy, the core literacy components. So we're going to continue to use Hagrid in kindergarten, first and second grade, and continue to use it as an intervention in grades three and four. We are hoping eventually that students in fourth grade won't need Hagrid. It really is an early, an early elementary program. But we are continuing to use it as we have students that need it. Spelling connections, I talked a little bit about this in the spring. Spelling connections is replacing words their way. Words their way is, is a vocabulary building program, but we really wanted something again, that's aligned with the science of, aligned with the science of reading and really is looking at a structured literacy approach. So spelling connections is going to be used in grades three, four and five, and as well as in grade six. So again, really solid word study there for our students in their upper elementary grades. We are doing a pilot of a program called Wit and Wisdom, which is, comes out of Great Minds. They also produce the geodes that go along with foundations. And if you've done any, I don't know how far you've gone down the rabbit hole with the science of reading. Sometimes I come up for air and it's four hours and I've wanted every child back that I ever taught to read. I'm like, can I do that again? Even though you're 35, come back. I want to try again. But wit and wisdom is really the knowledge part of, of the rope. And so what was wit and wisdom would provide to our district is really the content area, the vocabulary building. Wit and Wisdom is a really unique program. It not, it doesn't just look at social studies and science topics. It also brings in art. It brings in music. It has a lot of the components that I think that would mesh well here in Merrimack with our goals. And so we have two students at J Mews, or I'm sorry, two teachers at J Mews that are willing to pilot that. And then, and possibly their partners as well. And we are sending a group of teachers to Laconia tomorrow. You may remember Michaela Champlain, who's now the principal up there at one of the lower elementary schools. She's invited her old Merrimack friends to come. They're kicking off Wit and Wisdom. So we're sending a group of people there tomorrow to just learn more about it. You may see that in the budget as I talked to Matt, not saying that Wit and Wisdom is going to be the program, but it checks a lot of the boxes. So we're going to be piloting that. I also want to point out the department chair, Manny Otis, and at the, at Merrimack High School, the English department there did a huge amount of curriculum work this summer to really look at their courses and align their cortex. So as we go through, and in a minute, I'll talk a little bit about EduPlanet. There's a lot happening in the English department as well as we look to align not just the standards, but also what are students being exposed to, you know, who's teaching Charles Dickens? Who's teaching Edgar Allan Poe? Where does that happen in our curriculum? Give a quick update about math. You may remember that we were talking about piloting to the most up-to-date versions of our two primary mathematics programs. So that's a full implementation this year. We did some piloting last year. So K to six, those teachers are using Envisions. And then in seventh and eighth grade, they're using a program called Big Ideas. But they are also the 2024 versions, which are aligned to the standards. One of the things we noticed when we unpacked our, our, our data is that we, we were using the 2020 version and it wasn't aligned to the Common Core. So that was, you know, I, I think some really low-hanging fruit that we just could have, you know, got the new program. So thanks to, you know, for going through that process. And we've had some really good quality, high-quality professional development around that as well. We have a great relationship with the Envisions rep. Tippi Johnson is from Merrimack. I guess she lives right across from J Mews. So she's done a lot for the community. So thank you, Tippi, if you're listening. In the area of science, you may recall that last year during budget season, we were talking about bringing some common materials, making sure that regardless of where you go to school, that you're having a similar experience. And one area that we really wanted to target with science, and there is a program called Mystery Science. It has some online videos, some online resources for teachers. And we also decided that we were going to buy the Mystery Science kits for this year. So K to five, we have really fleshed out what units each grade level is going to be responsible for, which was, you know, something that was well overdue. And thanks to Julie DeLuca, she led that science work last year and into this year, Laura Livy. We were really looking at, okay, who's, what are, what are the, what are the units we're teaching in kindergarten? What are we teaching in first grade, all the way up to, to fifth and sixth grade? So we ended up purchasing Mystery Science K to five. You may remember from the budget that we purchased new physical science textbooks for all of our freshmen. And then the next thing that we're going to work on is that after that alignment, we realized that grade six really needs some materials. So we'll be bringing those forward to the budget this year. Social studies, just to let you know, we are in compliance with RSA 18911, which asks to now have a half a year of middle school civics. And that for us is going to be in grade eight. But certainly we need to prioritize some common materials K to six. We went through a similar structure than, that we went through with science, but social studies still needs a little bit more work. And adopting some kind of program like Wit and Wisdom would help in that area because they, those content areas are typically science and social studies driven. School counseling, just to give you an update, we are continuing to use Second Step in kindergarten through sixth grade. The middle school is going to be piloting two programs this year. They are going to do an extended pilot of Character Strong, but they are also going to be looking at Wayfinder. And Wayfinder is the program that the high school decided to adopt for their advisory period. And Wayfinder actually is applicable in sixth grade. So if we are successful, we have some access to some of those units. And Principal Rowe and Assistant Principal Fowler are interested in looking at that as well. So trying to get in alignment with the programs that we're using. I know that it doesn't, it's not a terrible thing to have you Second Step and then Character Strong and then Wayfinder. But if you can use Second Step and Wayfinder, that, that makes it a little bit cleaner. So we are looking at those pieces. I mentioned EduPlanet 21, we're making a lot of great progress. I do think our blueprint, which is the, almost like the landing page, will be ready to be posted this fall. That'll include a course overview of every course, abstracts, and then the unit lists, as well as key materials or key texts that we'll be using. They are, there's a lot in draft form right now. I'm happy to, you know, to show people if they're interested. It's just there's so much work still coming in. September 30th is the date that I had asked teachers and administrators to have that ready for us to start an audit and appear review. But hopefully my self-imposed deadline is by the end of October. No one has said that to me, but that's sort of what I've, I've put as a deadline. Instructional updates, you may know that both the middle school and the high school have new school-wide schedules this year. Bill and I met with them last year to really look at maximizing instructional minutes and also to provide specific time for advisory. So they've, the leaders in those buildings have done a tremendous job being responsive to that. And then following suit there, the elementary schools have also created more structured building schedules where they're identifying particular blocks of time during the day where a particular content area will be taught. And we really think that that will help us to improve our instruction so that we can do some coaching during a specific time or really looking at what's happening across the board in, say, third grade science. Because if, when people are teaching it at the same time, it enables administrators and others to go in and take a look so that we can improve our, our practice. We are definitely excited about Thornton's various participation in the bridging the gap in the 603. That's the Pathways to Literacy Proficiency Grant. We've already spent our $25,000 that they've given us. But with that comes some really high-quality training from the state. They'll give us some instructional coaching, some support, and also some tools that we'll be able to explore this year and next year to see if it's something that we feel is a good fit for Merrimack. On the same line of instruction, professional learning, I had already mentioned our, our scheduled professional development with the New Hampshire Learning Initiative. But we also have some really high-quality professional development coming in on iReady. We had a full day of iReady onboarding. They're coming back in October. They're coming back in January. And then we have access to those folks. And I just want to thank our, our tech team between Jason and Brendan and Luda and Angela and Adam. We have done a tremendous amount of work pivoting from STAR 360 to iReady, getting all the rosters ready, getting all the single sign on. But the middle school started this week and the data is already rolling in. So we're really excited about that. We also have some specialized training from Wilson language practitioners coming in kindergarten through grade three. You may know they're pretty proprietary. They, they want their money for anything that's related to Wilson. So it's really hard to have anybody else come and do that work. So we have a really great plan with them to not only train our, our classroom teachers, but also our interventionists, as well as our Title I tutors, who are doing a ton of the intervention in this area. And just to let you know, our upcoming early release on September 22nd will be on the required bullying training for bullying and harassment. We're going to be using Vector that we purchased last year. And then also doing some follow, follow-up at staff meetings. And then finally with assessment, the, the district-wide assessment calendar has been updated and posted. It is subject to change. As we look at iReady and those windows that are open, we may have to change some of the dates, but what we are assessing will remain the same. STAR 360 has replaced iReady in kindergarten through eighth grade. Also wanted to point out that iReady will be our screener for the dyslexia and related disorders as per RSA 259. We are required to have an initial screener within 30 days and then a secondary screener. So iReady will be the initial screener and then the secondary assessments will go along with what core component that student needs. We are no longer administering the Fanta Simpanel assessment to students. In grade seven and eight, we are no longer going to be giving the grade assessment, which was a standalone assessment that was on a Scantron sheet. It was kind of a strange assessment, to be honest with you, but we're not giving that anymore. And then new to the high school this year is that we are going to be giving the PSATs in March. And you would look for in working with Kay Colbert, who has just been a tremendous addition. We, we're going to be organizing an assessment day where students in ninth and 10th grade take the PSATs and students in 11th grade take the SATs. So the environment can be set for all of that assessment to happen at once. And we're really excited about the information that we'll get from that. And then last year, when Fernside and our Director of Wellness was still here, we talked about the Dessa and her replacement, Sarah Prada is full speed ahead with the Dessa. And we're going to be using the Dessa in kindergarten through sixth grade, piloting it in seventh and eighth grade. And at the high school, we're trying to figure out how that would work because it would be a non-academic survey. And so we would need to build some capacity around that. And so that's my updates and I'm happy to take your, your follow-up questions.
Open it up for questions, comments. Go ahead, Lori.
So I, I really am excited about the advisory program. And I think when we look at a lot of our policies and the social emotional learning and everything that we're trying to do in the schools, how important it is to have somebody who's following the child. So I'm interested in having more information at some point in time on how that's going, you know. Has it, you know, really helped our climate and culture in our schools? That's what it's, you know, intended to do. So just, I, I love it. I just hope we can get more information.
We can definitely have Kay come, Kay and Angela and Jessica at the high school. Those are names you probably are familiar with. They are working with, with Mr. Claire, Mr. Zampieri, Ms. Hanlon to develop their, what's happening during that time. So they're using Wayfinder a fair amount, which is a tool that really unpacks all of those pieces. So you have standalone activities that you can do with students, but also follow-up activities. And then if you have students that need intervention, they have some tier-two groupings as well. And the school counselors are going back to having, you know, small group instruction with students, which I think is great. And this year we are also partnering with Greater Nashua Mental Health. We have a SAP counselor onsite now, full-time. So those are all really great things that are happening at the high school.
It's, it's exciting because I think it's, you know, really helps support kids.
Sure. But I could have either Mr. Claire or, you know, Ms. Colbert come.
Sure, sure.
Go ahead, Jenna.
So I was just going to say, it is exciting from a teacher perspective. I had to, I had to laugh so that my students were like, what is this? I missed my homeroom, which by the way is a good, is good news, right? Because they connect with their homeroom teacher and then it's been changed to this X block. And, you know, somebody in my house might've come home a little up in arms about the whole thing. I was like, take it down a notch, you know, because she.
Because it's change.
Yeah, change. I was like, change is difficult for some people. But I did explain to her, you know, what it was all about and she chilled down a little bit. So yes, I think there's been some student, students who were like, wait, what? Because they missed their homeroom teacher because of the connection. So while homeroom wasn't advisory and it wasn't necessarily used in that way, the connections they were making really were still very important and excellent. So kudos to the high school on that. I had one question about the SCL curriculum. Oh, I think somebody's going to have to remind me. I think at some point we talked about the fact that Second Step had moved into a new updated version and a lot of it was more online, but we're using a lot of the older stuff that is in a book. Sarah Prado is probably the better person to ask these questions to. I don't know if you are up on this. I was just, my question was, when's the last time we, you know, evaluated our SCL curriculum? Now that I think when we adopted Second Step a very long time ago, there wasn't probably a lot of other things out there. What I do know is out there now is Responsive Classroom has put out something that's.
Awesome. Fly5.
It's so good. It's so good. After going to the Responsive Classroom training this summer, saw it for myself for the first time and the fact that we are a Responsive Classroom district, I feel like, I'm sure Sarah is right on this. But it bears like if, I remember we were talking about possibly, you know, going into the new updated version of Second Step with all this new electronic. But I think, I wonder if it's the time to look and say, hey, maybe we should be looking at what dovetails with what we've already got really nicely. So.
I know that that was prior to Fern's departure. That was one of the things we were going to unpack this year is where is Second Step? As, as in sixth grade, they are using the online version because that's all that's available to them, which is another reason that they're interested in looking at Wayfinder, just because it's, it's much more middle and high school. You know, the presentation is a little different. If you've ever sat through a Second Step lesson, it is, it can seem a little young for a very mature sixth grader who, you know, really wants to try something new. So certainly I can mention that to Sarah. She's very excited about her new position and, and wants to be here and has a lot of information about, about programs. I don't know how far Wayfinder, if Wayfinder is a K to 12 program, I can ask her. I think one of the things that the elementary teachers like about Second Step is that there is a kit, hands-on, physical materials that go with it. Not saying that, I mean, Fly5 had cards and, you know, that you do during the morning meetings. And there's definitely roller-like materials.
The dovetail with Responsive Classroom is just so ideal because if we're using that framework to then put something in that fits is awesome. But yes, and Fly, and Wayfinder is a K to, a K to 12. I know that only because our district happens to be trying it in, in, at second through fifth grade school. So at least second through fifth grade. So I'm assuming kindergarten through. But yes, anyway, just, that was just my thought when I was looking at this. Everything else is really just very exciting.
Thank you.
I just had one quick, because you brought up in your presentation, the new schedules at the middle school and the high school. And just within the last couple of days, I had spoken to some folks in town and I don't know what, what's, the story is behind it. But I'm told that the band and chorus, particularly the band class, that has actually been reduced and not like cut down from what they've had in the past, where now it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday morning for 20 minutes. And that's during morning announcements. So it's more like 10 to 15 minutes. That, just to put something on your radar, again, this was just told to me in the last couple of days. So I'm not sure what the story is there. Obviously, if that's the case, that's a problem for me. As we all know, that's one of our crown jewels we have here is that program. So this might be something to investigate, to look into. I don't know if you have any information.
We'll take a look at that.
Yeah, I do know that they were having, you know, what had happened in the past is that students would arrive at the middle school early for band and chorus. And that would eliminate kids that couldn't come by bus.
It's huge equity issue, for sure.
When they would arrive, they were already at 20 and 15 minutes. So I'm just not sure. I, I don't think that that part has changed. I think students are still arriving. But I do know that there was very little instruction happening during band. It's for everyone else. They would have a period of time where they weren't really using it for intervention or new material. So it was almost like the building was in a holding pattern. And when we unpacked the instructional minutes, and not that band and chorus aren't important, but they were certainly driving the schedule for everything else. And so I can definitely go and ask Mr. Bozeman and Ms. Hoppa about, you know, how is it going so far? But I will say, both the changes at the middle school and the high school, I would suspect that we're going to come forward with some tweaks as you have, you know, students that are experiencing it for the first time. we're going to come forward with some tweaks as you have, you know, students that are experiencing it for the first time. You have a brand new principal who's been other places and has seen things done different ways. But I will certainly circle back and just say, what's the impact? And, and talked with Ms. Levine about bands specifically. But I do know, you know, just like anywhere, you, you know, your schedule, you have to pick your drivers, right? And, um, I can certainly look at the impact and, and let you know.
And, and I've always said, again, as a music educator, band and chorus should be driving the schedule conversation because it's the only class that has every kid in it. You know, it's got every grade level all across the board are in those classrooms. And so I, I have, again, totally biased. I think the master schedule should be built around those classes because they're the only ones that affect all those kids. So.
And that, that might be the band. I do know that she also teaches lessons and that's a separate time.
Right.
So I don't, I would want to be able to speak and, and have actual information because I do think that students are still getting their lesson time during another part of the day. Do you, do you know about that?
So I know a little bit about that because I have a seventh grader in the band. So instead this, instead of taking the regular music class, like for whatever quarter they would have music, they have a special music class with Ms. Levine. So she's doing the, the intense instruction, but I think it is only one quarter where, where he has it. So it's not like all year, but he does have, he does have a whole nother block that's like just the, the instrument.
Is it just, is it the whole group or is it just his instrument would be my question?
That would, that is what it is. I believe. Yeah. It's just like individual instruments.
So there's issues with that, um, especially when you, you know, the whole band performs, not just the clarinet section or the trombone section. So when you're trying to get all those kids together to give a performance, they all need to be in a room together. I know when I first started here, I was kind of blown away that band was before school. I, I had huge equity issues with that. I'm surprised it's been able to be as successful as it has for as long as it has with that. Those classes should be considered academic classes built into the school day. And so, yeah, I, I would just, like I said, not to put anybody on the spot, which kind of sounds like I am, but I'm not. It's, it's just something that came up in the last 48 hours. I wasn't even going to say anything, but the schedule is on the thing. So I had to say something.
Sure. And I, I want to make sure that we have the right information to you and to the families. So, um, I'll be certain.
Cool. Yeah. Thank you.
Sure. Let me just follow up with that.
It, it is something we have talked about as a board, moving that middle school schedule, particularly down the road, long-term to those classes being academic classes during the day. And so, um, yeah, once we have all that data and the actual, the correct information, make sure we are, we're all on the page. I'm with you. I mean, I, I, I think we're all there. I think we're all there. Especially for the kids who are going to continue on. That is their academic path. Is music. And so, um, and again, just as you said, I, I, I don't ever want to put a kid who can't be there because transportation or those kinds of things. So, um, this may be the way it is for this year, but I think long-term this board is in agreement to move that into a different direction.
It's gotta be during the day.
Yeah. So we've taken a lot of time to look at what other middle schools do.
It's not great out there.
It's, it's really tough. Um, I taught in a middle school for a long time and band was during recess and that was a terrible time to do it. And you do it, and as a building principal, we did it during, we did it before school or after school. Again, you know, it's, it's tough because you're, you know, you're really struggling for every minute. Because you still need to teach the core blocks of, you know, literacy, math, science and social studies. So if you, and those are all supposed to be an hour or, or 80 minutes for literacy. I mean, you just, and then you just chip away at having a whole contingency of unified arts. And I mean, you, I'm talking to people that have lived in schools. So you know that that's, it's a really hard balance to figure out.
Yeah.
But I'll certainly.
I've been on those scheduling committees. So, you know, it's, it's, it can be impossible to, to find those times, but just keep trying.
Sure.
Couple of comments.
Yes.
If you would. Um, first of all, I think you sense the energy that Amy brings to the school district. As I've said before, Amy accomplishes more in one day than most people do in five days.
Thanks, Bill.
And is an absolute delight to work with. She and I met with the, um, seven through 12 administration last year, as she mentioned about schedules. We didn't think there was enough, uh, academic time. And just this morning, I received an email from a middle school teacher and said, "Good morning, Bill. I love the new schedule at MMS. Already I have more time to learn about each student as an individual and build connections with them. I've also found I have a lot more time for academics and feel my students are learning so much already." So just some tweaks to the schedule. And as, as you said, we probably might need to make a few more in, in working in collaboration with the principals. One of the things that, um, I'm going to bring forward to you also in the fiscal 25 budget and talking with Amy and talking with Matt, uh, Matt, please correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe we have a district-wide budget for materials, supplies, PD assessment or, uh, Amy's position. And I think that's critical in every district I've, I've been in and worked in. There has been a district-wide budget at the discretion of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Assessment. Because during the year, there is always some nuancing in materials, supplies, professional development, assessment instruments that is needed to meet some emerging needs of students. And so in the fiscal 25 budget, we're going to establish an account, a district-wide account for the Assistant Superintendent to use at his or her discretion based on the needs of students and the needs of staff coming forward. And I think that will greatly benefit us because I think to this point in time, that position really pretty much has been handcuffed by a lack of funding. And I want to see that, uh, changed and, um, we'll be looking for your support and the, and the budget committee's support.
If I could second your sentiment, I would love for Amy to have a budget.
Amy would too.
So I don't have to look at her with those puppy dog eyes coming in my office.
Is now a good time?
And I never really understood what the, what the problem was, what, what the issue was. But yeah, when Bill mentioned it today, it's like, yeah, no kidding. And people, whoever has been in your position for the last 23 years has always scrambled for funds. You know, it shouldn't be. He should have a budget.
Thank you.
Right.
And I just have one comment. I, you know, I deeply appreciate your ability to stay focused on, you know, our goals, but also have the courage to come forward like last year when you said, like during the school year in March, like we're going to move forward with a brand, most people are like, oh, well, wait. You're like, no, we're not waiting. We're gonna go and, and you're not afraid to shift gears. You're not afraid to tell us, you know, these are the results. This is what we need to do. So we appreciate that and we trust you.
Thank you. That means a lot to me. Thank you.
I literally was going to say the exact same thing, that the trust especially is that, and you've proven it time and time again already. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Right. Do you just want me to talk about the, um,
Yeah, might as well.
Student Gallup poll from here?
Yep.
Okay. So in your packet tonight is the scorecard from, uh, the Gallup poll student, um, that we did in June of last year. And it was, it, the results here are terrific. Um, I wish Harley were still here to talk a little bit about, um, the different areas that the Gallup poll gives us information about. You will see that we, it has broken down by building. And when you go into the scorecard, you, you look at things like it, it's broken down into those four areas. Engagement, Hope, Entrepreneurship and Financial Literacy and Career Connected Learning. And the results that for students, it's on a Likert scale. So one to five, five being strongly agree, one being no, that is not happening. And so if you look on, uh, say page two, where at the top it says engagement, just to give you a little orientation of what you're looking at. As a former math teacher, I always feel like it's important that you know what you're looking at.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
So in the upper left-hand corner, there's the letter N. That is the number of students that, um, started or participated in the survey. You'll notice that it doesn't always match the number of responses because students didn't have to respond to any question. They could skip anything. They could, you know, not, they could start the survey and then not do any of the responses. So they were given the opportunity to provide responses, but they didn't have to. And they could just work their way through. At the top, they have something called the Engagement Index and then the Hope Index and then all of those different indexes. We went on, uh, to a webinar with, uh, Clifton Strengths and they are the people that run the Gallup poll and, um, have that proprietary information. So, uh, the index is really a formula that they've come up with. It's a combination of some of the scores. Um, and as a math teacher, I always think about it as weighted, um, questions. So some questions weigh more, uh, towards the overall index or what they're calling the grand mean. So it's the mean of the mean with some of those questions having more, um, overall, uh, weight. Uh, particularly, um, I have a best friend at school. What they've noticed is students that are more engaged. If they have someone at school that they feel connected with, you'll often, often see that they're more engaged in school. I just also wanted to point out the high level of the adults at my school care about me. I think that's really important. If you look at our current score, which is a 3.36, compared to the overall Gallup Student Poll database at 3.82, we're not that far off. And that data, um, has been collected since 2009. So you're looking at 14 years versus, um, you know, this is our first time completing this. So as you go through, you'll notice that we have some really great information to move forward with. What Clifton recommends is that you look at your lowest score. So I've been able to identify those. Um, and then also where you have the greatest gap between your school, New Hampshire participants and, um, the overall Gallup poll database. So we'll be able to unpack that, um, at the building level and then as well as at the district level. If you go to page, uh, six, you'll see all of the items and then they are disaggregated by grade level. And one of the things that I think it's important to look at is when do things like engagement and hope start to, um, where do they peak? And then where do they fall off so that we can, uh, target either activities or instruction, um, or work and advisory? I do think that Harley's work with ELOs, um, if you look at Career Connected Learning, overall, our students really want more participation, um, in those kinds of opportunities. They said it at the middle school. They've also said it at, at, at the high school. It was, um, one of the highest results that, that we have. I will note, um, that we are doing activities to learn about jobs or career in class. We had some pretty, um, high responses, certainly not where we'd want to be for now, um, but a good place to start. And then on page seven, you'll see some information. It's called self-reported items. They pull out some, uh, you know, some questions that they really just want to bring to your attention because they know that, uh, the two top responses, um, where students feel connected, uh, to their school and also are the most hopeful about their future are related to, um, clubs. If you can get kids engaged or, um, attached to at least one activity, they will come to school, whether that's a club, a sport, an activity, an ELO. And then also mentors. So when Harley was talking about mentors and you'll see throughout, they're asking questions about, um, my teacher says that I do a good job. I have at least one teacher that cares about me. I mean, that's where, really where you can target, um, some of your, um, activities to be able to not just increase those scores, but really have students feel that way when they come to school. So I'm really excited about, um, this information because as I mentioned in the memo in, uh, before we decided to participate in the Gallup poll, we'll be able to do this for three years for free. Um, and then beyond that, if we, you know, choose to continue to participate, that'll be up, you know, to the board at the time. But I think for the next three years, it'll give us really solid information, um, to be able to, you know, to really customize things for students. So exciting results, um, even though it's our first time. Questions or?
Open it up for questions. Comments, feedback? Uh, I was pretty happy with, uh, a lot of the results. I did notice the entrepreneurship and financial literacy numbers. So definitely some, some, some work to do. And I know that's kind of a growing, um, consensus around the country is more of that.
Yes. I also should have added, um, Ken, that they had to remove a fair amount of questions in that section because of the non-academic survey legality in New Hampshire. So when we went through this with the gentleman from Clifton Strengths, he said, I'm almost embarrassed, like I'm paraphrasing, but I'm almost embarrassed because we had to remove so many questions because it would have been considered a non-academic survey. So just to point that out, I mean, I think there's only, you know, two responses.
Yep.
And he said, there's actually, you know, 12 to 15, just like all of the other sections. But they had to kick, you know, they had to remove those questions.
Sure. Okay. Um, yeah. And, um, again, just looking, um, you know, the, the first one, the first category about our engagement. You know, there's just a lot of really positive information here. So, um, hopefully we can, um, do, do we have an idea of how many students? Maybe you mentioned that already. Do we, do we have an idea of approximate number?
The took?
Yeah.
So at the high school, it was 291 in the engagement section. And then at the middle school, 390, like around 390.
Yeah. So it's pretty good numbers. Good for something that was anonymous and optional and.
And optional and.
Great.
Quick and online and all of those things. So.
Getting those kids to do most things can be challenging. So that's awesome. There are no questions or comments? Uh, I think, yeah, thank you so much for that information. All right. Moving on to policies. We have a few to. Oh, I'm sorry. We have other, other new business. Go ahead, Lori.
So I just have one thing for, um, new business. We were able to, um, talk to the town council and talk to Paul McCauley about, uh, our meeting space. And in the past, if there was a town meeting in this room, we were always bumped. And in the future, um, they've now made it that the town council has precedent and then we're number two. So we will always be in this meeting space unless the town council's here, which we run a $90 million budget and we have a lot of work to do. And that meeting space was, you know, more difficult to meet. And so, um, I do appreciate the town council and, um, Paul McCauley giving us this space. As they should.
Thank you for, um, leading those conversations. We definitely appreciate being in the bigger room. Okay. Uh, any other new business before we move on to policy adoption and review? We have two to adopt tonight.
Yes, we have the, um, approval of admission of homeless students. And the approval of education of children in foster care. The first of homeless students, um, as you can see is a sea of red, uh, in terms of, uh, new material that is provided by our legal counsel, uh, with some, also some, uh, some strikeouts. Uh, this is meant to comply fully with the McKinney-Vento federal legislation and also the New Hampshire Department of Education. Uh, we have had no, um, uh, no comments on, on this particular policy. And the education of children with foster care also has been carefully reviewed as we know from the first, second reading, uh, by legal counsel with some addition, additions, revisions. And so I'm going to recommend that these two be approved this evening.
Go ahead, Lori.
So I make a motion to approve both the, uh, admission of homeless students, JFABD and the approval of education of children in foster care, JFABE as written.
Second, second from Naomi. All those in favor? Hi.
Thank you. And for the second reading, uh, we have the suicide prevention and response, uh, policy. Once again, thoroughly reviewed by legal counsel, uh, making sure that we comply with, uh, all statutory requirements. And so, um, I will tell you, there, there is really, uh, no action required on this tonight. Just to let you know though, there, there has also been no public comment on this, uh, this particular policy. Okay. Um, Lori?
Go ahead, Lori.
I was going to say, I appreciate, uh, last time we spent, um, some time talking about this policy and I appreciate all the additions that we made to it. I feel that the policy is really well-written at this point in time. And, uh, if, uh, the board approves, I don't mind moving forward. This policy is written. I can make a motion. I don't know if we need another reading on it.
Um, I, I have no problem with that. I just don't know if we want to leave it open for public review for another month? If we think that would make.
It'll only be another week, isn't it?
Next week.
Fair point. Okay.
So I'll make a, a motion that we accept the suicide prevention and response policy, JLGBB as written.
Have a second? Second from Lori. All those in favor?
So, so before we vote, I have a question. This, this is not actually related to this policy and I'm going to vote yes because it's fine. I, I, um, something that comes up when I'm reviewing policies sometimes is, um, how wordy they can be. And there, the reason I'm bringing it up with this one is because there was a specific line in this one that kind of made me go, oh, I wonder. And I always hesitate to ask to make changes to that because I'm concerned that because it's been run by legal counsel, like does it, are there legal reasons why it needs to be worded the way it is? How much, how much can I play with it? The, the specific example in this one, where did it go? I should have written it down. Oh, it was the ID cards. The, the specific example in this one, where did it go? I should have written it down. Oh, it was the ID cards. So on the last page, page four, line 152, and I want to give a shout out to Sandy for adding in the line numbers on the, on the policy so that if we want to find something now, it's much easier.
Not paragraph one.
Exactly. So if you read that paragraph, it says, for each school within the district that serves any students in grade six through 12 that issues student identification cards, these identification cards shall include on either side of the cards, the telephone number for the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline as follows, National Suicide Prevention Lifeline 1-800 blah, blah, blah. This requirement shall apply to any student identification card issued for the first time and for replacement cards issued for law damaged or lost student identification cards. It's a mouthful. And my, my question was, for things like that, can we push back a little and say, hey, you know, can we say, I wrote it down and I don't have it here, unfortunately. I had a really good, like two sentence revision of that whole paragraph that said something to the effect of, actually, you know, I have it. I'm going to look it up.
While you're looking for that, Naomi, I did check with our legal counsel.
Thank you.
And our legal counsel really doesn't have any issue with reducing the number of words as long as collectively we understand and determine. And if we need to have them review, that it doesn't make any material change to the policy itself. So they don't have a problem with that.
Awesome. That was, so my, my rewording was, student identification cards issued to district students in grade six through 12 shall include the telephone number for the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline as follows. National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, then the phone number, period. This requirement applies to both new and replacement cards. It says basically the same thing as those other, like six lines with far fewer words.
I, I like that, but one of the things that I've noticed with New Hampshire law, you gotta have the shall.
Do you?
You, that, that shall is really important.
That's a legal term.
Yeah, it's a legal term.
That's correct.
I like that you can add the shall. You know, apply, but yes.
We can do that. My rewording, but with shall instead of will.
Well, that, and that's interesting point is we were always taught that be careful with shall, will and may in a policy.
No, that's fair. And that was, that was part of the reason why I asked the question and I did ask Bill to run it by the lawyers because I, like I said, I was very leery of completely rewording something and being like, am I changing this? Am I somehow exposing us to legal implications that I'm not aware of? So.
So we'll double check it. Anytime there's a, a propensity to reduce the number of words, we'll redo, have a final review by legal counsel, make sure it's, it meets all the statutory requirements.
So do we want to pull the motion off the table?
I think so.
So I'll pull the motion off the table and we will rewrite the last on page four, four to make it less wordy.
And then we can vote on it next week.
Naomi, if you could contact Sandy again with that language, I know you sent it to us.
Yeah, I will. I'll re-mail it.
Thank you. And the last, well, we have two more policies that we're looking to fast track and hopefully have approved next week if you so desire. Is the dress code policy and public participation at board meetings. Public participation at board meetings goes back to the spring, if you recall, when there was a question of whether or not we could limit the speakers to just Merrimack residents. So we've, based on the counsel, legal counsel input, we've revised that somewhat. So that should not be a big, big issue in terms of approval.
Bill, can I add something to that though?
Yes.
I still think we need to have a clause in there because I agree with the, the bottom paragraph about in the interest of preserving individual privacy and due process rights, the board requests that comments, including complaints regarding individual employees other than the superintendent or individual students be directed, blah, 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 through the grievance. I think we need to add that, because our grievance policy doesn't bring that to the board. So I think we need to ask our legal counsel if we need to add that clause that someone who has a complaint can request to go through the grievance policy up to the board. So that it protects that public comment requirement.
Okay. Could you do me a favor? Could you send Sandy an email with that, with the suggested language?
No, I'm, I'm talking about the next books.
Thank you for that, Lori. If you could, yeah, if you could send that, we'll run that very fast.
All right, I do have some. So I'm hoping, so I'm hoping with the dress code policy, I don't think there's anything more controversial or more difficult in a school district than dress code policy. I think it, it's, it takes, it takes a lot of energy for all people involved. And I think for, for me personally, I would like to see us table the policy and put together, you know, ask student council to have an ad hoc committee who talks about dress codes in public schools today because, you know, going back to like when I went to high school in 1970s, we had mini skirts, we had bell bottoms. We had kids get sent home for dress code policies. It hasn't changed in 45 years. But I think that buy-in is really important, doing this work, listening to parents, students, teachers, especially teachers on, you know, how they, what, what their expectations are. You know, one of our goals that we talked about this summer was a lot about collaboration and a lot about empowering teachers. And so I don't, I, I know that, that this is a legal document, but I would want that input for us to then discuss it.
Go ahead, Jenna.
So I agree. You're, you're talking a lot about the high school, really, the, the dress code, particularly at the high school, when you talk about student council and things like that. But even at the elementary schools, I remember there being rules about, you know, my daughter's tank top strap width or whatever that I remember thinking, you have to be kidding me. She's like six. You know what I mean? Like, so absolutely at the school level. Because this policy, I'll talk about it in some, but the school level, we're talking about minutia. It's spelling out things like, like spaghetti straps or, you know, you have to wear clothes to shoes or shoes with a back or whatever, things that, you know, parents and students should have input on. However, when I'm reading this student dress code policy, it is literally a 30,000 foot view that basically says they need to wear a top, a bottom. It doesn't basically say, it says, student will wear a top, a bottom, footwear. And then it, and then basically it's, it spells out all these different things that could possibly be offensive, pornography, threats, any hate group affiliations, that sort of thing. So it is extremely top level, basic societal norms, right? You gotta wear a top, you gotta wear pants, you gotta wear footwear. Yeah, no shoes, no short, whatever, no pants, you know, and that kind of thing. Like you gotta wear those things. So this is very, very, very general as the bed, I see it as the Bedrock Foundation basic legal requirements, right? I do think that there's a few, I have a few questions about, you know, that on here. But I don't think it's good precedent for the board to hand over policymaking power to a committee. I think we should approve this 37,000 foot or whatever the flying rate way up there is. Policy, we should continue to move it forward. We should, because it is that basic. And then yes, absolutely. I think committees should be made for high school or elementary level or middle school level, specific dress codes because those do need to be reviewed because when I was looking at this, I then looked at the, for example, the high school where it says things like, well, and it says it in here too, and I think it should be taken out, but I'm going to get to that in a second. But it says things like, your shirt needs to be tucked into your pants. And, oh, you can never have your, you, you cannot ever expose your midriff. So has anybody ever been to Merrimack High School recently?
Or any school.
I'm just asking. I'm just asking because I've, everybody's midriff is showing. I'm not saying I have a problem with that. I'm just saying it's the style right now and nobody's picking those battles. And I'm not saying we should. I'm saying that needs to be revised. But this policy, as it stands, is very, very general, except for starting in line 67 where, so line 67, 66 starts out awesome, intentionally show, okay, let me go back. Students may not wear clothing, blah, 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 tattoos, personal, anything that intentionally shows private parts slash areas or undergarments. That's basic societal norm. Specifically, clothing must cover private parts in opaque, not able to be seen through material. All fine, right? It's basic societal norms. I think that next line, I would argue, needs to come out. Students are encouraged to wear tops that either tuck into bottoms, which pants, shorts, skirt, dress, or overlap bottoms while seated, walking and standing. Like, that literally is every girl at Merrimack High School right now would be in violation of every policy we've written. So that to me, that line needs, if that line comes out and we keep everything else, it is a 100% overarching, very basic policy that we can then build committees to look at, how is that going to flesh out at each grade level, elementary school, middle school, high school? I am not in favor of tabling this. I think we should take out that line and move forward.
Can I make a comment? I just think it's so funny that the leadership team, that is the sentence that we also went round and round and roundabout because it's just so hard. Just, it's just interesting that that's what you honed in on because the middle, nobody wants to talk to kids about what they're showing. But so we were trying to put something in the policy to say, you're encouraged. But you can't, we're not going to be sending kids home or, or anything like that. But it's just interesting that
And my thought is everything in this document, if we can keep it to a 37,000, like you gotta wear a shirt, right? Then we can hash out, well, what does the shirt have to look like when we get to high school, middle school, elementary school? If we're getting, you know, we're getting into the weeds. But I don't think this document should be in the weeds and I don't, I think this is a basic legal document that is the bedrock. And then the committee comes in, what parent feedback for, what does it look like at the high school? What does it look like at elementary school, et cetera?
Following up to that then, do we need to say something in this document in the beginning, like define the scope that says this is overarching district level policy and the, the other schools? I don't know if we Yeah, or, or it, it, that can be determined at, at the grade level or, I actually, I, I was, I'm wrestling with the, the encouraged line too because I kind of read it as we're encouraging you to cover your bellies, but we're not going to make you.
That's how I read it.
So I, I kind of liked it for that reason. It's, it's different than the one up there that says you can't. It doesn't put teachers in an awkward position where they have to.
Doesn't say you shall.
Right. Exactly.
All I'm saying is I don't, I don't object to the, that phrase at all. I just don't think it belongs in this policy. I think it gets into the weeds. If we take that out, everything else is very high level. You need to wear a top, bottom pants, shoes. And the rest of it, we can flesh out like, like Lori said, get buy-in, student committees. I mean, we need to get students. This Merrimack High School dress code policy really does need to be looked at. And I think that's where the committee and work involves, belongs.
Go ahead, Lori.
You go, you go.
Well, I was just going to say, I hate talking about dress code. I've been dealing with dress code for two weeks, non-stop. Believe it or not, our dress code is very similar to Merrimack High School. And having to enforce shirts that barely graze the top of the pants because when they bend over, raise their hand, it shows their midriff. I mean, I've been dealing with this for two weeks. Kids hate it. Hate it. They want no dress code. They really don't. They just want whatever I want to wear. And we know that part of our job is educating them is time and place, appropriate time and place. But time and place for an elementary school student looks different than a time and place for a high school student. So I agree. We, that line is too specific. What I would change at the top is this policy is intended to be an overarching guideline for the schools in developing their individual dress codes.
Yes.
So that, you know, we have that as our, we have our legal document. Our handbooks are legal documents, by the way. They're not policies per se, but our handbooks are the agreement that we are making with families. So be, be assured that what we put in handbooks, we have to be just as careful as what we put in policies. But this, this is very broad. It needs to stay broad for legal purposes, but yes, we need, and by the way, I did the same thing. I looked at the handbooks today. They all need updating on dress code. And that is where we can get into the weeds.
And I think we, I think what we're saying, Lori, is that we agree with you, that we need this committee work, but that we need to pass this policy for work first so that the committee work can move forward.
I'm just going to say, so we talk about core values and then we say here, it's recognized that students and their parents guardians hold the primary responsibility in determining a student's personal attire, hairstyle, jewelry, personal items. As a school board, it's our obligation to have a vision on what we want our students at Merrimack School District to dress like. And in a society where dress has changed dramatically from the 1950s, 60s, 70s, 80s, but we still need to have standards and the standards need to come from this board. And so to have buy-in for the standards to come from this board, I think we need to have more voices so people understand why there is a dress code. And I agree with Lori. I, as an administrator, the worst part of my job was dealing with dress code. However, we know from research and our jobs on the school board is to get these students to be prepared for life. And there is a dress code in life, by the way. And students who dress better do better. And schools that have a dress code that they, it's consistent and it's followed, those students do better. All the research points to it. So I, again, I, I think we need to have buy-in at what this is going to be. I agree with you 100%, but the buy-in is going to come at the school building level. I mean, nobody's going to disagree with the top, bottom and footwear. And, and nobody's going to disagree with, well, or they shouldn't be disagreeing with, you can't wear shirts that are hateful to any group of people or promoting illegal drugs or gangs. Those are generals, general norms. I think where the buy-in comes in is we make the specific policies. We can still make it a board, this final board decision on the handbooks. But we can have those committees for each of the dress code specific. But this is not going to align with it because our, our line 18 doesn't align with student. It's saying that it's the parents' responsibility. It's not the school district's responsibility. It's the parents'. It's the parents' responsibility to follow the guidelines of the district. We can change that.
May I just say also that the last, the last line in this policy does cover to a certain extent which are discussing this as the superintendent of designee is authorized to develop procedures to implement this policy in which, which we will do.
And I think I want, I want to say too, like, I understand what you're saying. You, you're concerned with lines 18 through 20? And you're, you're, you're saying something.
And also, also there's pieces, there's pieces for me on school safety. So when we look at dress code, it's really important that people understand, you know, social, emotional, kids might want to wear, they might want to wear a hood. The reason that we wouldn't want kids wearing hoods out, especially in the hallway, I'm not saying in classes, but in the hallway, is because when we have the cameras, we have facial recognition, if we had a situation, God forbid, a school shooter, we want to know who they are, where they are. It's really important and hoods take away from that. So that's all really important parts that we haven't even addressed, that we need to address, that people need to understand why. Why, why don't you want kids, you know, to wear a hood in, in the hallway? What, you know, so when you get people together, they start understanding. But I understand what you're saying. That's like going down here, but I think this has to be represented of that. And so I feel like, I feel like if we don't do that, we're putting the horse, that's just me. So I, I probably going to lose the vote, but I think we should, you know, shouldn't put the horse before the car.
Because she jumped in in the middle of something. Sorry. Can I just finish what I was saying?
Sure.
I, so I think what you're, you're saying is you have the issue with lines 18 through 20. It is recognized that students and their parents slash guardian hold the primary responsibility in determining a student's personal attire, hairstyle, jewelry and personal items. I think that's something that we should get community feedback on. And that's what part of this, that this board policy procedures of first, second and third readings is for because I understand what you're saying and I don't disagree with dress codes. I think there should be dress codes and standards and I, I haven't disagreed with one single thing you've said. I just, I just, I'm saying, I think we should have a foundational thing and then put, you know, are hoodies appropriate in elementary school? Maybe. Are they appropriate in high school? Maybe not. Those are things I think we flesh out later. But when it comes to this line, I, I don't want to open a can of worms here. I, I don't wanna open a can of worms here, but like parental rights were a huge thing that our town talked about during COVID. And they might have something to say about those lines. And I think that's something that people need to chime in on and that we need to hear before we finalize this policy. But again, I, I am in favor of keeping this high level and then absolutely creating committees to flesh out issues of safety and appropriateness and, um, desire for teaching students appropriate attire during learning in a committee level that focuses on each age group, like you said, what's different for elementary, what's different for middle and high school.
May I just say in, um, in consideration of policy development and approval, the, the policy represents the what? And accompanying that oftentimes is the regulations, the procedures, which is the how, how do we implement the policy? And so that's, that's basically what we're, we're getting at here in terms of each respective level, developing the how associated with this more general, uh, kinda ten, twenty, thirty thousand foot policy.
I'll throw in my two cents real quick. So I, uh, I, once again, I agree with pretty much everything that was said. Uh, there does need to be community buy in. These committees do need to exist. Um, I do agree with Jenna where, well, and what most people have said tonight in that this is, whenever those committees take shape, this is what they're working off of, is this document. Um, and then we can finalize specifics and narrow all those things down. You know, it could look different per school, you know? So those conversations with, with stakeholders and students and parents and, and teachers, that, that definitely needs to happen. We also need to be careful, one of the wraps with student dress codes is gender bias and having dress codes that are specifically geared towards, uh, male versus female. I've heard a lot of discussion on female dress tonight. I have stayed quiet because as a lone male board member, I'm not gonna tell a young female student how to dress. So, um, you know, when coming up with that language, we need to make sure that we're not targeting any one demographic or, or any one gender when it comes to that stuff. So I'll, go ahead, Jenna.
My last comment actually is really just a question. In lines twenty eight through thirty two, we have this, this, um, I'm just gonna read it. Students have the right to be treated equitably. Dress code enforcement will not create disparities, reinforce or increase marginalization of any group, nor would it be more strictly enforced against students because of, and then crossed out. Does that mean we're taking it out? Racial identity, ethnicity, gender identity, if it feels like we need all those words in there, why are we crossing them out?
I'm gonna wonder if that was a typo.
Okay, okay. So I'm thinking the red means we should add it and somebody accidentally struck it out?
Is it possible that they can, they thought they might have covered that in the other new language that's there?
I'll, I'll double check.
Yeah, I feel like we don't want that because otherwise it would be, we, we shouldn't be more strictly enforced because of household income, body size, type or body maturity, but it include, but we can do it for all those other reasons. I don't understand. I feel like we should double check that.
I mean, I see where it's added on the other page, but I, I don't see a problem. It's different and yeah, I agree, that should definitely not be struck out.
Uh, well, I would absolutely, if anybody's home watching this, please do weigh in. This is up for review. We're gonna be discussing it next week, right? So, um, please take a moment, if you have the time, send any of us, uh, your thoughts, your comments, um, about this. Cause we, we all recognize, uh, as Lori pointed out, this is easily one of the most controversial spoken about policies that we have. It changes sometimes, feels like every five weeks, uh, it needs an update. So, um, I would, I would advocate for anybody to reach out and, um, please do give us their thoughts.
Yeah, well, well said, because by all of you, there is, as you've all said, there is nothing easy about developing a dress code policy. It just isn't.
And I guarantee you, as soon as we write one for each of the handbooks, three months from now, we'll be like, we need to change this or add this or tweet. I'm telling you, we've already tweaked ours in two weeks.
Alright, so we moving on? Moving on. To approval of minutes, uh, from the August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, public and non-public meetings. We have a motion to accept.
I'll move that we accept the, the minutes from the August fourteenth, public and non-public meetings.
I'll second it.
We have a second from Lori. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero zero. Thank you so much. Uh, moving on to agenda item acceptance of gifts and grants under five thousand. We have a few tonight, five thousand dollars, excuse me. Uh, first is Merrimack Rotary Club to Merrimack High School for five hundred dollars. Uh, and then the pro AV systems to Merrimack High School golf team for five hundred dollars. So we have a motion to accept those gifts on behalf of.
I make a motion to accept the gifts and grants for under five thousand dollars for the Rotary Club to Merrimack High School for five hundred dollars. And to the pro AV systems to Merrimack High School golf team for five hundred dollars.
Second.
Second from Jenna. All those in favor? Passes five zero zero. Thank you so much. Very generous. Uh, moving on to agenda item ten, consent agenda. We have some resignations. We have a resignation and some nominations.
Yes, um, tonight in your packet, there is a resignation, Keith Bike, special education teacher at Merrimack Middle School. And then two teacher nominations, Heather Sylvia, special education teacher, Merrimack Middle School, and Mackenzie Stanley, will be the new kindergarten teacher at Reed's Ferry Elementary School.
We have a motion to accept. Oh, well, let's, let's do them all, right? Oh, you did just do them all. Alright, do we have a motion to accept? So moved, thank you. Do you have a second? All those in favor? Five zero zero, thank you. Moving on to other committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Go ahead, Naomi.
I am like in a tizzy this week because I'm busy and.
Gotta drive that school bus.
For, it's, it's fun, but it's, I'm not used to going to work. I went to a Parks and Rec meeting on August sixteenth. And when I was rushing out of the house this afternoon, I didn't pick up a piece of paper that has my notes on it. So I will give you an update for what they talked about next week. It was, it was gonna be like details of how summer camp went. And, uh, the one, the one exciting thing that they're doing that touches on us is the, um, after school program at the function hall at Wasserman Park, which is accepting kids from Thornton's Ferry. And, uh, I don't remember what they said about, about like enrollments and stuff, but I remember that it was exciting. And, and I, as a parent, was really happy to see more after school options in town.
There you go, definitely. Um, I don't have a report. I have my first meeting with the professional development committee Thursday. So I will have something next week in regards to that. There are no other committee reports. Moving on to correspondence. I did receive, I think we all received, uh, correspondence about dress code before we even discussed it, uh, tonight. So, um, thank you for sending that in. Um, obviously you heard the discussion that will continue into next week. Go ahead, Naomi.
I wasn't sure where to put this one. So because my son went to seventh grade this year, I'm in, like connected with a lot of seventh grade parents. And I heard from a lot of people about the shorter lunch periods this year. So mostly I was telling people, you know, I don't know, why don't you start with Mr. Bozeman? And, and see what you get. And nobody came back to me and said anything else, so I assumed they found good answers. But I decided to reach out to Mr. Bozeman. My kid eats really fast, so the twenty minute lunch period is not a problem for him, but I can see where it could be a concern, um, for others. And Mr. Bozeman was awesome. Actually, he was like, this is gonna be too long to write in an email. You wanna just come observe lunch? And so I went today and I watched a lunch period at the middle school. And it is really hard to describe. I can see why it was easier to see it. But apparently the way it used to happen was they had half an hour and they had everybody come down, two teams at once, and they had them all sit down and get quiet. And then when everyone was quiet, they got up and they went and they stood in line and they got their lunch. And they were like, we were just, we, we just heard how we wanted to find more instructional time during the day. And it was apparently a pretty no brainer to take ten minutes off of lunch and go, okay, can we do this more efficiently? And wow, was it efficient? The way they have it now is they only have one team coming in at a time. Everybody's staggered by three minutes. So one team comes in, you go right to your seat. If you're, if you brought your lunch, if you didn't bring your lunch, you go right to the line. There's two lines. I actually timed it from when the kids got in to when the last kid was through the line was four minutes. I said that to Mr. Bozeman and he goes, ah, we can do better than that. So, uh, and he also, it, it was, it was very efficient. It was well run. It was impressive actually, given that it was, we're what, like six days into school? And, um, some of the other concerns I heard were before kids could sit wherever they want. So it was a social opportunities to sit with kids who are on different teams. Um, and he mentioned that they are going to, they're actually gonna start this week. They're gonna, it's gonna be free seat Fridays or something like that. And they're gonna try it out now that they've got everyone kind of in the routine. They're gonna like do it up and then they're gonna add some more. And so those, those opportunities for socialization will be coming back. And there was something else I wanted to say about it. I don't know, it was fun. Going in and seeing how it was one. Oh, I remember is, he wanted to say that they are looking out for kids and making sure kids have eaten all their food. Nobody's, nobody's gonna be made to put away their lunch if they're not done. They're gonna let people eat. So if you're, if you're concerned, you know, if you're concerned, I strongly recommend reaching out because they were great to talk to. And, and everyone should be assured that your children will have enough time to eat lunch.
You know, may I just say thank you for, for going in to observe because one of the things that we talked about last year is the amount of time that was consumed by making the students sit down before they were able to go up to lunch. So really the net loss in time is negligible because that time was consumed with the children going to their seats first before they could go up to the line as, as you observed. So there is really, when you come right down to it, no change in the amount of time the child actually has to eat. And that's what we discussed last year and they were able to implement it through the schedule change, uh, over the summer. Because it was just, there were just some, some things that I know they were well intended, but sometimes they have to meet the test of common sense. And, and I think it's much better off with them coming in on a somewhat staggered basis, but going right into the line instead of having to sit down at a table.
Did you get any feedback from kids, like your own son? Did he have any thoughts on that?
Um, my, my own son is, is very just taken as they come and, uh, he was actually, uh, oh, that was the other thing I wanted to mention is they're, they're not, everybody doesn't have the same lunch period every day. So you, you're not stuck with the early lunch every day and you're not stuck with the last lunch every day.
I've never heard of that. That's pretty cool.
It is cool. And that was actually one of the things my son said he liked. Um, he actually happened to be in the lunch period that I observed and I met his eyes twice and I got massive side eyes.
You wore a sign, right?
You know, just one final thing, one of the things we also keep an eye out for is those students who are off by themselves all the time. How do we, how do we help them, uh, work with, working with other students in terms of developing some friendships? Developing some communication, because that's very important at that age level.
Back to our correspondence, which I thought that was awesome, by the way. I received a couple of, um, concerns from parents who, uh, both working parents kind of situations that did not appreciate the staggered start. They had kids in multiple schools and it was just very tough for their family. So I just, I, I think as we always touch base with our families every year, we, we receive feedback from the public on those kinds of things, you know, what works best. And of course we can't please everybody, but we wanna please the majority. But, um, it was just a concern by a number of working families.
Lori, you're specifically referring to the two hour, uh, delay on the first day here? Because the administrators, um, have told us now for two years in a row that that's been exceptionally effective. So, you know, we'll, we'll keep taking a look at that. There is some thought, uh, if we can work it somehow into the schedule, although this gets into a collective bargaining issue, they would certainly prefer a full day of transition instead of a two hour timeframe. So we'll continue to take a look at that.
Any other correspondence? And we shall move on to public comments on agenda items. If you'd like to speak, uh, on behalf of any of the agenda items tonight, you are welcome to come up to the microphone, state your name and address. Uh, and we'd love to hear from you.
Chuck Moore, Four Depot Street. I'll come better dressed at the next meeting.
You look great, Chuck. Alright, do we have a motion to adjourn with that? Do we have a second? All those in favor? Five zero zero. Thanks, everybody. We'll see you next week.